Okay. Good evening. Since 5:30 PM, the Board has been in closed session to consider the following: The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district; collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives; and the sale or purchase of securities, investments, or investment contracts. I will entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Move. We come out of closed session.
A motion and a second are heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening and welcome to the February 3rd Board meeting. Our mission is to educate students to be self-directed learners, collaborative workers, complex thinkers, quality producers, and community contributors. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Board members present this evening: Charles Kush, Christine Gerke, Paul Leong, Kristen Fitzgerald, Donna Wankey, Janet Yang-Ror, and Joe Kozminski. Student ambassadors present this evening: Anna Snyder and Claire Yu.
At this time, I would like to welcome Mrs. Noon of the Highlands Elementary to introduce some students to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Okay. Sorry, we do not have people to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join the Board of Education in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
At this point, we have reached the point of our agenda for good news.
So, earlier today, I was informed by Madison Principal Erin Anderson that Adam Schmidt, the learning support coach and a department coordinator at Madison, who's also an author in his spare time, his book Speechless has been selected as a 2020-2021 Rebecca Cottle Book Selection. And for those who need to know, the Rebecca Cottle Young Readers Book Award is an annual award given to the author of a book voted most outstanding by students in grades four through eight participating in Illinois schools. So, I am sure there will be a concerted effort in Naperville 203 to get a lot of votes for that book. But congratulations to Adam and the great work that he's done.
Wow. Great news. Okay. We have reached the point in our agenda for public comment. The Board of Education welcomes comments from the public at its meetings. Citizens who wish to address the Board of Education should identify themselves by name and home address. Comments by individuals shall be limited to three minutes. If the person is representing multiple individuals or a group, such person may be allowed to speak for five minutes. Issues raised during public comment will be taken under advisement by the Board of Education but will not be discussed this evening. Issues raised during public participation may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff. The superintendent is the Board's designee to coordinate response to public comments and will apprise the Board accordingly. At this point, I would like to call Maureen and Doug Walgren to come and speak.
Press the button and it has a red light. We are Maureen and Doug Walgren, 111 West Moreland in Naperville. Doug and I have reviewed the draft MOU and have several comments. First all, we'd like to know if this is our only opportunity to give feedback on changes to the MOU. Also, during your discussion tonight of the MOU, can the public provide feedback or is that only for the Board's discussion? We both feel it's too emotionally difficult for us to stay and go through the details with you tonight, as many of them bring us back to that fateful day again and again and again. This Wednesday, February 5th, would be Cory's 20th birthday, which we might be celebrating with him here if more care had been given in the moment three years ago. We would like to leave you with the list of our comments on the MOU and ask that as you read through the draft tonight, that you carefully consider our input, which is done in our son's memory and for the protection of all D203 students. We have enough copies of our comments for everyone and we will leave them with you now.
On behalf of the whole Board, thank you for coming and we'll take a look at your comments.
I will also just address your process question. Just, I can answer that briefly. The Board will take no action on the MOU this evening. It's their first opportunity for conversation regarding any policy or related type of things. Typically, at the next meeting, if questions are addressed for the Board, we would ask for action. But there are times if there are multiple questions or additional research that has to be done, that would be continued to another time. So, it will always be done at a public meeting on a publicly posted agenda.
I do not have any additional slips of paper for anyone in the audience. Does anyone else in the audience wish to address the Board? Okay. All right. Then we will move on to action by consent. I will entertain a motion to consider the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second are heard. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Kozminski.
Aye.
Leong.
Aye.
Wankey.
Yes.
Gerke. Yang-Ror.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Kush.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. All right, we have reached the point in our agenda for communications and it is time for 7.01 Student Ambassador Reports. Who would like to start this evening? All right, Claire.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone has had a great week so far. So, at Central, a few things have been happening. So, on Friday, January 24th, our DECA team went to regionals at Rosemont, Illinois, and 91 students actually are advancing to the state competition and will be furthering their competition there. And then on Monday, January 27th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, our Student Services Parent Program actually hosted another talk called "Four Years to Independence: Ideas to Help Your Child Be Ready," and that was hosted in the Little Theater. From January 29th to January 31st, in Peoria, Illinois, there was the ILMEA District Festival. And basically, this includes a lot of general music events, bands, chorus, and jazz and orchestral assemblies. And four of our students actually made it to the All-State Honors in both band and chorus. On January 31st and February 1st, our Varsity Aeroettes, which is one of two of our dance teams, went to Illinois State University in Bloomington, and they qualified for the state competition. Course selections are wrapping up, so they will end on February 4th. And this is a really important process for all the counselors because all the students are using school links now instead of Navvions to transition into registering for their next year's classes. And then on February 5th, which is upcoming, from 7:00 to 11:00 PM, we will be having our annual Mr. NCHS Competition, which is a comedy/talent show in which a group of male students compete for the coveted title of Mr. NCHS. And then this Friday, February 7th, is our Winter Assembly, where student performers hype up the crowd in anticipation for the winter dance. And then leading up to that is Saturday, February 8th, which is the actual winter dance from 7:00 to 10:00 PM.
Thank you very much, Anna.
Hello. I hope everyone's doing well and I hope everyone enjoyed watching the Super Bowl, if that's what you like to do. To start off, this coming week, student government, or, sorry, excuse me, next week, student government is hosting their annual winter blood drive. In the fall, we had a blood drive and we had over 100 students come out to participate, which is the most that students have come to participate in a blood drive in, I think, like over five years. So, we're hoping to get around the same turnout for this blood drive. Last week, our Learning Commons provided equipment for students to make vision boards for the coming semester as far as the goals they have to achieve. As far as academics, not much is new besides Claire mentioning switching out of Navvions as far as registering for classes. But, a lot of seniors are committing to colleges. I actually have committed to college as of last night. I will be attending the University of Iowa and majoring in nursing, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. This past weekend was the Winter Play at North and Frank. I got to see it and it was extremely touching production. It was very well done by all the students. It was a very small cast, but it was very impressive what they managed to pull off. This past weekend, as Claire mentioned, it was ILMEA State, and we actually sent four students, too. We had one from band, one from choir, and two from orchestra. This weekend is our annual Orchesters Show at North, and the performances will be Thursday through Saturday at 7:00 PM. Show Choir is preparing for their annual Clash of the Sequins, which is the competition that they host in February. The event will take place on the 15th and will feature performances from over 19 show choir groups across the country. That's super exciting. Wrestling JV1 placed first in DVC and JV2 placed second this past weekend. The two Coaches of Girls Gymnastics won the Best Coaches at DVC, along with their team winning grand champs at DVC. Dance Team traveled to State this past weekend, just like the Central Girls did, and that would bring an end to their competitive season. And Girls Basketball won DVC last Thursday night.
Thank you both for those great updates. It looks like there's a lot going on. And congratulations from the whole Board. Okay. We will move on to Item 7.02 Superintendent Staff School Report.
I'd like to invite Principal Christine O'Neal from BB to come to the presentation table. Every month, the Board of Education invites one of our schools to come to the Board and provide an update on their work around their school improvement plan. This evening, we have the pleasure of hearing from the Principal of BB, Christine O'Neal. So, we'll turn it over to Christine and learn about the great things going on at BB.
Okay. I would like to start by thanking the Board of Education for welcoming me here to share our story. I would also like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude for the Board's willingness three years ago to review BB's unique needs and their consideration in redefining how we allocate resources and support. I'm extremely proud of the community effort over the years and feel we are making the necessary strides to provide each learner with the strategies, supports, and guidance they need to be successful. Several members of our school improvement team are here this evening to show their support for our school. They are Matt Langus, Assistant Principal, Nora Shamas and Mary Ellen Oski, Learning Support Coaches, and Jennifer Schmidt, 3rd grade teacher. Our school improvement team works diligently to analyze our school data, monitor our plan, and design professional learning for our staff and parents. Each team member has embraced their role as a leader and have achieved innumerable success through collaboration and focused engagement with their colleagues. This presentation will highlight many of our celebrations, as well as identify actions needed to continue to make academic, behavioral, and social-emotional gains while showing how our students are living our district mission statement. As you pass through the doors at BB Elementary, you will be welcomed by smiling faces of staff, students, and volunteers. Student work is proudly displayed alongside enlarged photos of our students working collaboratively, playing at recess, or focusing intently on music they are learning to play. A print that says "BB: A Great Place for Kids" was placed on the walls long before I began my tenure at BB. However, those words speak volumes to the culture and climate of our school. BB's community includes numerous students whose parents walk these same halls and have chosen to continue growing in this community. Additionally, one former student has now become a valued staff member. BB has always been fortunate to be part of a diverse community, and this has always been one of our fundamental strengths. Area families frequently seek out enrollment with BB in order to expose their children to the rich and diverse environment we can offer. We are particularly proud of our staff and community as they seamlessly adjust to an ever-changing student population. Let's take a closer look at who we are at BB Elementary. After reviewing our 2017 presentation, I reflected on our demographic shifts over the past two years. Notably, our student population consists of 49.7% white students in comparison with 55% just two years ago. Based on the makeup of our school, we have continued to qualify as a Title I building. We have benefited from having a math specialist, and the additional funding we have received has afforded us the capability to offer our student population additional before and after-school learning opportunities, as well as parent education events that may not have been available otherwise. At the onset of the school year, our school improvement team completed a comprehensive analysis of student achievement and growth data from the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the Illinois Science Assessment, and the Fall NWEA MAP Assessment. After notating areas of strengths and opportunities for growth, we set rigorous but realistic goals for English Language Arts, Math, and Social Emotional Learning. We believe the action steps our team established will help our students, all students, make significant growth in each of these educational areas. Our students continue to meet ambitious goals, and we are very pleased to share that they met last year's target of 60% of our students would meet or exceed standards on the English Language Arts, IAR. Our staff and students have made great strides in humanizing relationships and living our school expectations of being safe, responsible, respectful, and ready to learn. While our math goal continues to be a work in progress, we feel confident that moving forward as our staff gains further immersion in our school improvement plan and the new math curriculum is fully implemented, our students will attain our math goal by 2021. These two graphs show BB's student achievement on the Math and ELA/PARC assessments over the past five years. We are proud to note positive achievement trend lines in both our Math and English Language Arts data. We attribute this academic success to a number of factors such as coaching cycles, professional learning around instructional practices, and the staff's efforts to authentically connect with all students and their families. BB's staff follows a process of continuous improvement and are constantly reflecting on their instructional strategies and their impact on student growth. As stated earlier, our school improvement team set rigorous new goals and action steps to challenge all learners. Over the past two years, our staff has engaged in high-level professional learning exercises, including but not limited to number talks, reading conferring, equity, and trauma-based Through our school planning, we identified several subgroups based on achievement gaps to report on. However, when analyzing our school data, we're always looking at each student's learning progression. As we dig further into our IAR/PARC achievement data, we can clearly see the benefits of professional learning translating to student success. As noted in the graph above, our PARC IAR achievement percentages have shown tremendous growth for Hispanic/Latino population, English learners, and students from economic disadvantage. We are proud that several of these percentages have doubled over the past five years. This success is due to our strong belief in working as a community to support all learners. Our home and school has provided over $12,000 to enhance our classroom libraries with culturally responsive texts. Many of our students also enjoy daily literacy through our longstanding history of collaborating with Hurrah volunteers, and BB consistently boasts and inviolable 12 to 15 volunteers. Last year, our school improvement team identified a need to place a heavier emphasis on math instruction. Our coaching team provided learning sessions, which were supplemented by outside expert Graham Fletcher, and demonstrated the value of these lessons through consistent implementation of math number talks and communication of clear learning intentions at the onset of each of their lessons. Through this process, students were able to strengthen their number sense and utilize more critical thinking skills. We reinforce this message with the staff and students by focusing on the learning pit concept created by James Nottingham. While our IAR data did not reflect the same tremendous growth we saw in ELA, we did see gains within our classroom Common Formative Assessments. Our staff is eager to implement the new math curriculum and help support all learners through our multi-tiered systems of support approach. We have some subgroups that have been identified in our school improvement plan, such as Black and African-American and children with disabilities that were not reported in this presentation as their longitudinal data was not able to be reported in over the past five years due to the fact we did not have a large enough sample size within these subgroups. Our school improvement team and instructional support team closely monitor the learning progress of these subgroups and continue to design rigorous differentiated learning paths for all students. In order to close identified gaps at BB, we know our students must make outstanding growth each year. As indicated in gold on these graphs, our students' growth percentile is a particular point of pride for the BB staff. At BB, our staff believes that they can make a positive impact on each student that enters their classroom. This collective efficacy mindset led our staff to establish learning goals for each of their students. In the spring of 2019, our school implemented a master schedule to maximize the effectiveness of our available human resources in an effort to help our specialists reach a greater number of learners. We believe students will continue to persevere and grow based on the academic and social-emotional opportunities provided by our teachers, specialists, and paraprofessionals. Diversity such as ours can create some challenges, and those have been met with great success. One area of particular focus for our staff has been the growth across our ethnic groups for the 2018-19 school year, and we are very proud the data reflects our efforts. As we look at our data in comparison with district and state averages, BB has exceeded expectation and outpaced average growth from both. Our staff is also excited at the fact we are performing in the top 10% of schools statewide with no underperforming subgroups, allowing us to move from the status of commendable in the 2017-18 school year to exemplary status in the 2018-19 school year. While the data presented this evening focused on PARC IAR data, I also want to point out the fact that we use a variety of other measurement tools to assess our progress and inform our decisions. Through our professional learning communities, our teams meet each week to analyze data, share instructional practices, and identify their essential standards. Through the study of multiple data points, we have been excited to learn that an increasing number of kindergartners and first-grade students continue to exit the year on or below or above grade level in the area of literacy. This encouraging trend can be attributed to smaller class sizes at these grade levels and more efficient utilization of building specialists in support of students. The strength of our improvements is also evident in the increasing number of students that qualify for our gifted programs. While our ultimate goal is to increase student achievement, we believe it is essential in developing the whole child. The growth we have seen with our data has been exciting, and we are equally happy with the various ways our students bring our mission statement to life. The following slides capture our students taking an active role in the community and in their own development. Our Dine for the Better program allows our 4th and 5th grade students the opportunity to be leaders in the lunchroom and on the playground for some of our younger learners by helping them navigate these overwhelming environments. They will help open milk cartons, sit and talk with them, or invite younger students to play. Bobcats on a Mission empowers our 4th grade students to identify ways they can make a difference at BB and in the community at large. These are just two of the many examples that demonstrate a difference our Bobcats are making while being community contributors. There are many examples of our students in action being quality producers. First Lego League was identified as it highlights the partnership we have with the Naperville Education Foundation and their commitment to making a difference in our community. This was our first year having two teams engage in the inquiry process, computer programming, and STEM experience. These students showed a high level of engagement and they worked collaboratively on a common goal. Another example I am proud to share is our implementation of the science curriculum. Students were able to collaborate to program their EV3s and utilize their higher-level thinking skills through our inquiry-based approach. As complex thinkers, students have embraced a process of setting rigorous academic and social-emotional goals. Goal-setting is present in all grade levels as students are setting a clear purpose while opening up a learning pathway with attainable action items. Collaborative workers can also be seen throughout our day as students work to problem-solve, engage in math talk, and work through STEAM activities. Our staff also models collaboration as they work on their essential standards through their PLCs, engage in differentiated professional learning, and analyze student data to plan meaningful instruction that will meet the needs of our diverse learners. BB students are also self-directed learners. One example that I am proud to share is the work of several 4th grade students who designed an all-school writing contest. These students chose to give up recess to formulate a comprehensive plan as to how we can engage all students in an optional writing contest. While we are still collecting stories, we have been overwhelmed with the amount of students who have taken time outside of the school day to creatively write and who feel comfortable sharing their work with others. Through this presentation, I hope we have been able to provide you an accurate snapshot of the BB school community. I also hope that it conveys how proud we are of the accomplishments our work has produced, as well as the optimism we feel about our direction we are headed. Many of our successes can be directly attributed to the environment of collective efficacy surrounding the students that learn with us. Such an environment where the goal involves all facets of student resources doing their part to continuously improve can only be accomplished with strong instructional coaching, community partnerships, and culturally responsive practices. Our staff is committed to the development of our learners and place a strong emphasis on the continuous evaluation of our progress in order to ensure the proactive environment needed to put our students on the path of being college or career-ready. With continued focus on our mission strands combined with a culture of keeping students at the heart of our instruction, I'm confident we will continue to reach our goals.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Questions from the Board? Donna.
Thank you for your report. I'm trying to understand, you said for the ELA and Math/PARC and IAR, I, sorry, IAR, that the subgroups that you provided were the ones that had the enough students in that category?
Correct.
Okay. So, is enough, I thought enough students was like 20 or something like that. Is that right? I'm not sure. That's right? So, and it has to be over the last five years, correct?
If I'm giving you longitudinal data, we would look at five years of them being over that amount.
So, I guess I'm trying to understand why we still don't have the subgroup of the Black students in there, because I, I don't know, I went back and looked at our Illinois Report Card, and it appears that there's probably 50 or so every year. Is that not right, then? I'm not sure. I'm trying to understand why we don't have them there.
The data I have has two out of the five years of over the amount that's reported to the state.
Okay. Two of the five years. Okay, so I guess-
Which is why I didn't include the longitudinal data.
Okay.
If there wasn't enough for-
I would like to understand, and you don't have to have this at the tip of your fingertips, but I'd like to understand the number of Black students that we had over the last five years then, because it doesn't mash with what we're looking at, what I'm looking at on the Illinois Report Card.
Patrick, do you want to try to address some of this?
Sure. There's a couple factors. Some of it has to do with all the students that we test and then the students for which we're held accountable. And so, because we test all students, not every student is part of the calculations related to SS. So, there's requirements. So, for example, we may test 50 students, but only 40 or 45 of those count from an accountability perspective because of maybe when they started or joined the district, as an example.
Okay.
So, sometimes we definitely test all kids. I mean, you've seen my data. We do 99+. But, sometimes when you take a look at the requirements in terms of continuous enrollment up to the time of testing-
Okay.
-some groups are more affected than others by that part of accountability.
Okay.
So-
That helps, thank you.
Does that make sense?
I just didn't understand why they weren't there.
Mrs. Wankey, I'd also add that I think our, for enrollment purposes, K5, we have approximately 50 African-American students at BB, but remember, the testing is 3rd through 5th. So, it might be less than half of those 50 that are actually part of the data.
Got it. Thank you. I was just a little confused by the number, so thank you for that. And thank you for your report. I have one more question, too.
Why don't you go ahead?
Oh, okay. So, I saw that your school improvement goals are the 63% for reading and the 60% for math. I guess it's much harder to measure school culture and promote and support social-emotional learning, and I thought it was interesting because you have the well-being of students and staff, and a lot of, I haven't seen that as much. So, could you speak a little bit more to the social-emotional school culture for students and staff?
So, we want to look at, I mean, obviously, if you're taking care of students, who's taking care of students is the staff. So, we always want to just look at what can we do to make sure that they're balancing the demands that are put on them as an educator. So, we do things to, like, you know, pick-me-ups, giving them motivational things, giving them time to collaborate and talk through, problem-solve. So, we just want to incorporate all stakeholders in making sure their well-being is taken care of.
Great. Thank you. And thanks to your staff, because I know with you being an impact school, there's a lot of demands put on you and your staff, and so we appreciate what you're doing. a lot of demands put on you and your staff, and so we appreciate what you're doing to try to work on closing gaps, so thank you, and thanks to your staff.
Charles?
Hi, how are you? Thanks for your report. Could you speak a little bit to the, when we look at the overall growth by ethnicity, the results that we're seeing for the Hispanic and Asian students on the math side?
So your question is, speak to the Hispanic-
Yeah, so if I'm, if I'm reading the chart correctly, and if I'm not, you can tell me. The Hispanic students, when you look at the school performance in terms of growth, it's 43, and then the district and state benchmarks are both higher than that, and then for Asian students, it's 51, and then the other, district and state are 60 and 58, respectively. So overall, on the ALLS column, you're performing at about benchmark for a district, and then slightly ahead of the state, and the other two ethnic groups represented there are both, from a school perspective, performing above, and all of your ones on the ELA side are performing above. So I was just asking if you could speak to the differences that we're seeing in the Hispanic and Asian populations on this chart.
Oh, because it's slightly lower?
Yes.
So I know in the past couple of years, we have increased our EL population, and so that could attribute to, you know, their, their growth not being as much, you know, as some of the other subgroups. It's something that we're continuing to watch, but again, this is just one year, so it's like, when you read a book, you don't just pull out one line and think you know the story, so I think we have to look at lots of different data measures to determine if that's just an outlier, or if that's something that we're seeing across, over time with multiple measures.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just a couple comments. First of all, thank you also to the staff that's in the back. It's great to see the whole team there. We know that this is a group effort that you're working on, and it is very exciting for us to see you move from commendable to exemplary. That's great. I know that reflects a lot of growth. It's also very, it's helpful for us when we hear a little bit, like, for example, for the subgroups that aren't, that aren't reflected on the achievement, we know that you are aware of those subgroups and working on the growth, and so thank you for reflecting that, and it does, looking particularly on that ELI, I think the ELA side, the growth looked really good. You have a very aggressive math goal. Could you tell us a little bit about that? I know you had a dip in your math performance this year, but like, the overall growth trend is going up, but you, that, that goal is aggressive. Can you tell us a little bit more about, like, how you expect that your work as a building is going to get you to that spot even with the dip this year, because it looks like a big degree of growth, but can you tell us a little bit more about that?
When we look at it, it's really only about moving 20 students forward. We think, we, last year, we implemented a lot of different things with math, professional learning, and then with adding the curriculum, the district curriculum, we feel like that is going to help give us more opportunities for kids to just be enriched in, in math opportunities, so I, I don't think 20 kids is really that ambitious. I think it's realistic, and it's something that, you know, I think is going to push us to think differently about kids, and I think we can attain it.
That's great. We hope that you do. It's exciting to see you continue to go forward with the aggressive goal there, and what a wonderful thing for all those students that, with that trajectory of growth growing so much higher, so thank you for that work. So if there's no further questions, thank you for your report, your report, and all of the work that it represents. Okay, we will go on to 7.04, President's Report. I do not have a President's Report this evening, so we'll move on to item 7.05, Board of Education Reports. Are there any reports this evening? Okay, so we will move on to Discussion Without Action. We have quite a few items. We will move to item 8.01, General and Optional Fees.
Annually, we ask the Board of Education to approve school fees for the coming school year. Provided in Board docs for you, the proposed listing of general and participation fees, and there are a few proposed changes to those fees, and I'll invite our Chief Financial Officer, Mike Francis, to address those recommendations.
Thank you. Presented this evening is a recommendation for general and participatory school fees for the 2020-21 school year. We are proposing three changes. The first is an increase in the monthly tuition for the Early Childhood Full Day Program from $520 to $560. This increase will allow for the cost of daily lunch, which is currently being collected as a separate fee. This increase would eliminate the need to collect a separate fee for this purpose. Last year, we did something similar when we increased the fee to include breakfast and lunch, or breakfast and snacks. Next is an increase to the current fee for the heart monitor straps purchased for 6th grade. Our costs for their purchase have increased in price due to changes in model as well as recent tariff increases. The recommendation is to pass this cost on from the current amount of $14.40 to $18.25 for next year. Finally, there is one new fee proposal. In an effort to diversify text, allow student annotation application, and respond to the needs of students, the junior high principals are recommending a $30 fee for English Language Arts that would satisfy the purchase of three novels per year. Families that qualify for fee waiver would only be required to pay the high school parking fee as well as the yearbook fee. The attached fee schedule includes historical data for reference. We'll be asking for action on this item at our next board meeting on February 18th. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you for that overview. Questions from the board? Oh, sorry, Paul, sorry, I didn't see you.
Hi, Mike. Since we're running a substantial surplus this year, and likely to run a substantial surplus next year, has there been any consideration of waiving these fees, perhaps temporarily for a year, to see if it has any dramatic effect on our budget?
That's not a conversation that we've had. If that's something the board would want to review, we can look at that. You would see that the total impact of those fees would be a loss of about $3.2 million, so that would not be my recommendation at this time. A lot of these are consumable items also, so Mike, I don't know if there's anything additional that you'd want to add?
No, we have not, we have not talked about that. There was a conversation a number of years back to consolidate the course fees with the, with the general registration fee, but not, not eliminating a fee. Our fee is, we can certainly look at our fees compared to other comparables. We typically keep track of that. We haven't reported that maybe to the board lately, but if the board is looking for that, we would entertain that. And if you, the board also has the option to, to, you know, set the fees however they want to, but we have not had the, we as a cabinet have not forwarded a recommendation to eliminate the fee.
Donna?
So I think in doing that, we would have to consider the fairness of that per se, because I think that the fees that we charge students in some of these courses are because of, like, additional things that they get above and beyond what they might get in another class. Like, for instance, you just mentioned the three novels that students will keep and annotate in the junior high, for instance. That's something that we would normally have asked our parents to go out and purchase those books for the students, and probably at more of a cost because they're not getting it in bulk. And so, I guess my concern would be, you know, that class is getting three novels, and this class per se here is not, and so I think that would have to be part of our
That'd be fine. I mean, we're in the discussion portion, discussion without action.
Right.
So I think it's appropriate to bring up any of these topics.
Can you give us a sense, if you have it right now, of the percentage of students that are, that are getting these fees waived? And if, if it's, can you tell us if it's easy to do so? Is it pretty straightforward?
Well, our, our general fee waiver policy, we have about, I think it's around 17% being reduced. I don't know specifically, you know, most of these fees are regarding the high school. The, you know, that, that population might vary a little bit from grade to grade, but generally, that's, would be the amount of fee waivers that are district-wide.
Is that what would be the normal practice of our benchmark districts, that we see, like, the 17%? And that, I did have a question about that, just following on. You, you said that the parking and the yearbook is not included in those fees. Why is that the case? Just out of curiosity.
Well, I, I think parking and yearbook are optional fees. You, you know, you don't have to-
Not mandatory?
They're not exactly-
So it's all mandatory fees?
If you're taking a class, obviously, you need the supplies for that course. You don't have to drive to school in part.
Do you want to give us additional comments on that? I mean, I know you said your initial response would be, that would not be your recommendation, but did you want to give us an additional?
Well, if the board, I mean, desires, that, that is something that I suppose we could look at if, if we get the direction from the board, but, you know, I think it's, you know, I don't know what additional information the board would need. Again, the revenue we collect from fees is about $3.2 million, and so I think all of our financial projections and models account for assuming that, that $3.2 million, right? So if we get the direction of the board, we can, we can look at it. I don't, there's other information you want to look at.
I'm not married to the idea of a complete waiver. If you say that 3.2 is too much, I'm willing to listen to half of that, maybe a 50% waiver. Again, just a discussion. I think our taxpayers pay a substantial amount in terms of property tax, and asking them to, to pay these additional fees is just seemingly like piling on, in my mind.
Donna?
But the point I was trying to make is that right now, you're paying for what you're actually getting, whereas if you were to take the 50% off and say we absorbed 1.5 million, or 1.5 million, then everybody's absorbing the fees for the classes of just the students who are taking the classes that have fees. So in, in effect, that makes a student who's not taking a class with a higher fee paying that fee for another student.
Why don't, why don't I propose this? I, I mean, just for, for conversation. I think, you know, to, in order to educate the board as a whole, in terms of be able to have information to make a decision. Mike's already suggested, let's look at benchmark districts and the types of fees that they, that they charge, and see if there's a comparison. Then, from that standpoint, we can survey some of those districts to see if they've ever done this. And then look at maybe what some incremental things could do, and may do to our financial projections. Now, we don't want to build too many assumptions into our financial projections, but, you know, a, a loss of revenue of $3.2 million would have a significant impact on our projection. So we can get more information, the board can act on approving these fees as the fees, and then at a later date, after more information can be gathered, you've had more opportunity to talk about it, you can make a decision then if you wish that the board pays for those fees, or if it's something that we, we collect as normal.
Well, I think we always want to understand from the administration as well, the administration's highest priority for our dollars. So, you know, obviously, we have other additional spending that we would do with $3 million, and so that would be my other question, is how would it rank in the priority for you in terms of what is best?
Well, and then where does it also weigh in priorities of the Board of Education in terms of abatement of a debt service levy, reduction of our extension, and those other areas that may pass on savings not only to the actual consumer, but also the entire community, so.
But I think it's a great place to start, to help us to understand how our fees look comparing, compared to other benchmark, benchmark districts, and we don't have to make a decision on this until next weekend. It's probably, we could gather that by next week, correct? Yeah, that's what I thought. Next meeting, I mean, I mean, next meeting, sorry. Any other questions with regard to the school fees, Janet?
Few questions. So the 3.2, that is everything on this sheet, right? So including all these participation and consumption fees?
That's actually all fees. That would include even fees for athletics, activity pass. You know, there's a, there's a variety of fees, and then there's course fees also that Mrs. Voice is going to talk about next, but, but that 3.2 numbers encompass, is all fees.
Okay. And, and Paul, like, the conversation that you're asking for, like, where the, kind of, looking into this more, are you contemplating also, like, the extracurricular fees?
No, my question is specifically about courses that are required, or their acquired fees.
Okay.
I have no issue with the extracurriculars. But if you take a course, there are a variety of courses we supply entirely, to Donna's point, and I'm not saying we stop doing that. I'm saying, because we are running the surplus, I don't see an issue with refunding some fraction of this to the taxpayer, because I think their burden's pretty heavy already, and to send another bill home several times a year, or at the beginning of the year, seems unnecessary to me. So if we can move it in the right direction, that'd be great, and I'd like to have that discussion.
So I think that, like, narrows down the, the scope, right, of, of what we're looking at, so, so not extracurriculars.
So you're looking simply, I want to make sure I've got this correct, too. So you're looking simply at the grade 6 through 8, grade 9 through 12, and the EC and half-day kindergarten general fee? Not the tech fee, not the, not the course fees, and not the athletics fees? Is that correct? And not the tuition fees?
Definitely not the tuition. It's-
I mean, their students are gaining a benefit, and they would be-
It's not required. So I would, I would eliminate the extracurriculars, and, not eliminate, I would say, I would not look at waiving the fees for extracurriculars, I'd be looking at waiving the fees for general classes and required things. So I think the biggest piece there might be-
Okay.
-the driver's ed piece.
Wait, okay. You said two different things, though, actually, because the general fee is the general fee. The course fees are the course fees. They're not on the same proposal. Are you talking about the general school fee right here on this proposal, or are you talking about the course fees on the next proposal?
I'm looking at both 8.01 and 8.02, a fraction of each.
I just want to make sure, in order for us to be able to do our, our, our work appropriately on, on, let's stay on item 8.01, which is labeled as the general and optional fees. So if you look at that document, you're looking at that document, what I'm understanding you to say is that you would like to have a conversation about eliminating, or, or not eliminating, but finding some reduction in the, the, all of the items listed under the general school fees category only.
Correct. Not necessarily 100%, we could talk about some fraction, and again, on a temporary basis, perhaps on a trial basis for one year, to see how it affects us, and so on.
And then I will ask you, I mean, that's, we've heard from one board member, is that, is that work that the board would like the administration to do?
So I guess I would have to consider how that would, I think you mentioned an appropriate comparison, which is, like, we have worked very hard to try, when we can, to return dollars to taxpayers as a whole, in terms of things like an abatement, where it would go to the whole community, to all taxpayers. Are you, are you thinking that this would be a higher priority to return to the individuals within the schools, or?
I'm saying this is the item that's before me today. I'd like to start the discussion. I'm not speaking to other reductions at this time, although I might be interested in those
What kind of direction do you need besides looking at the benchmarks? Again, like, I think from my perspective, looking at it as a board member, I, I feel like whenever we look at whether it's a spending or a reduction, it's a question of how it all falls in the priority with all the other areas. So it's in relationship to additional, you know, improvements that would have been sought for the, you know, you know, the next year in terms of the budget, et cetera. So I guess it's hard for us to be able to, with, when it's just a number, it's hard to be able to understand the impact.
So I'll go to our board agreements. Our board agreements indicate that one board member will not task the staff, that it has to be a consensus priority for the Board of Education in order to do that work. So what I'm asking for is this, is this a priority for the board, for a majority of the board, to task the staff to do the research and work behind making this recommendation?
And, and Mike, does your $3 million number just cover the general school fees?
No. The general is all fees. That $3 million was all fees.
Might we be able to get a, a number that represents just the general school fees?
The general school fees are about $1 million. It's like, the first four line items, a million, maybe a million-one, if I'm recalling properly. And then the, but all of the general fees would be maybe a million-seven or a million-eight of the 3.2 million.
Donna?
Donna?
So in light of talking about priorities, my priority would be the abatement, and- So in light of talking about priorities, my priority would be the abatement and a reduction in the tax levy before we even touch this. Those would be my priorities.
I guess for me, if the, the waivers, if, if we think that those are functioning well already and, and reaching the families that need the fees to be waived, this would be lower priority for me. I don't know if you all have a sense of that. These, in a lot, in a large way, that would kind of address, kind of, you know, the need and equity questions and...
I mean, I am confident in our process, our annual process to communicate information about the availability of fee waivers. I am not, you cannot convince me that 100% of our kids who would qualify have taken advantage of them, but I, I am confident that we, we do a communication process and we have ways in place in our schools and our principals, and schools know our families. And I, I am confident that we are reaching as many folks as possible that would be eligible for those waivers.
And I would agree with what Janet said, if the waivers are working, this is a fairly low priority for me. At some point, it would be good, I think, to look at other schools and just get a sense of, you know, where our fees line up with respect to those, to make sure that we're not, you know, out of line. But this is a fairly low priority for me.
I'll echo what Janet and Joe just said. Same for me.
Yeah, it's not high on my list, at least for this year. If we wanted to look at the fee structure overall in our, in the next budget cycle, I would be okay with that, but I wouldn't. Right now, I'm, in my mind, already set on a couple of higher priority items for the spring.
So we'll prepare a fee comparison with our benchmark districts and then take further direction from the board at our next meeting.
Great. Is that okay? So we'll go ahead and get the information about the benchmark fees, and then I think the board has expressed that, whether it be abatements or additional spending, or making sure that our fee waivers for those who have the free and reduced are, that would be our top priority, but that it's interesting and helpful to understand how our fees line up according to our benchmark districts. Okay. Okay, are there any additional questions with regard to item 8.01, which is just the general and optional fees? Okay, so we'll have questions if you have them, and we'll have action next week, next board meeting. Okay, we'll move on to item 8.02, high school course fees.
Okay, also annually, we review the, the fees for particular courses and other optional fees. Nancy Voice, Superintendent for Secondary Ed, will present those recommendations to the board.
Thank you. In board docs, you have a copy of the proposed high school course fees for the 2020-21 school year. Both high schools are on this document, and in most instances, the fees are consistent between the two high schools. Where a difference exists, you will see the school's name next to the course name with the fee for that school listed. You can see an example of this by looking at game design. Naperville North is using a workbook at a cost of $32, whereas Naperville Central is opting to use internet resources only, resulting in no fee at that school. There are a total of five courses between the two high schools with different fees due to teacher choice and the additional resources and materials that they use in those courses. The course fee charges are bold, or changes, excuse me, are bolded for your easy reference. These increases, and in some cases decreases, are due to publisher costs, material costs, and course or text changes. For example, accounting, accounting one is no longer using a workbook, so they're able to decrease their fees. The interior design program at Central has projected less of a need for some materials this year, so they've decreased their fees slightly. Fashion design, yearbook, intro to teaching, and graphics one and two at both high schools have reduced their fees for similar reasons. Publishing costs have resulted in a decrease in fees for AP US government and politics, but an increase in AP world history and Spanish languages and culture courses. You also see some new courses added next year, which are bolded in the document, and those fees are included for your review. One clarification, however, is the African-American literature course, which is one of those bolded classes, however, is not necessarily new. This course has been previously offered as an ELO-only course and is now being offered in a face-to-face platform. They are using a text, so you will see a fee this year due to that change. I will be asking for action at the February 18th board meeting, so I'm happy to answer questions you have at this time to help you make those decisions.
I'm just going to add briefly that Mike had referenced a, a review that we did of the fees a few years ago in alignment with the strategic blueprint. One of our concerns was that some of the course fees may, may be prohibiting some students from enrolling in those courses because of the fees. And when we did that review, we found that that's not the case, so, just for that background.
And just to review, you would have any kind of student who was on the free and reduced lunch, all these would be waived, everything?
That's correct.
Questions from the board, Donna?
So I just want to note, it's more of a note than a question. I just want to note that I, I really appreciate the fact that some of these are going down because it gives us really good, I, I know they're looked at every year, but it gives us really good understanding of the fact that they're not just looked at and that, but they're scrutinized and they're, and they're determined as to what they're actually using or not using, and then adjusting from there. So the fact that we have so many of them going down, and the ones that are, are, a lot of them are new courses that have, you know, that you've highlighted, so I appreciate that and their continual review so that we can minimize whatever we can for our students and, and parents. Thank you.
Also, thank you for reformatting it. It's so much easier to read in this format.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the board with, oh, Paul?
I'd like to bring up a similar topic here. I'd like the board to discuss and consider reducing or eliminating all of the non-optional fees that are presented on this, on this slide. I'd like to remind them, my fellow board members, that this is an opportunity to reduce some burden on our taxpayers.
So that proposal is actually more, a little bit more interesting to me than in this case, just because these are, you know, classes, and I, I just wonder, like, why don't other classes have extra fees? Do they, do we have like a budget per class, and these go over those?
They, these are teacher choice and additional above and beyond, but they are approved resources.
Many of these are also consumable-type materials that are retained by the students who enroll in these courses. So the workbooks, you know, we can't recollect the workbook, for example, because it gets work completed in it over the course of the year, and it would then be useless. So these are courses, then, that have consumable-type material that's required for the course. And, and in, in every case, we work to ensure that the fee being charged is just covering the cost of it.
I mean, in elementary school, they have workbooks, right? And I don't, we don't do these kind of fees, correct?
Yeah, I think it's just incorporated into the general fee that's collected for the elementary. Chuck?
Yeah, that, that's absolutely accurate, and ours are fairly minimal in terms of consumables.
Claire.
Sorry for bothering you again, but I just had a question in terms of, I have like one class that I'm taking right now called multivariable calculus, and it's actually $300 to take that class in order to have access to the resources. And I know it's like done in conjunction with UIUC, so maybe we don't have as much like power in terms of deciding that fee, but I was wondering, would it be possible to have like any sort of like waiver for that? Because I know that, that amount was kind of just sprung up, like, out of nowhere, like, oh, $300 due in two weeks.
That course, actually, since you're getting credit for that through University of Illinois, we're actually getting deeply discounted for those, those semester hour, course hours you're getting. But just like any waiver, if we have students that need, because of free and reduced lunch, we will 100% waive that course for them.
Christine?
Dan, can you remind me, when the kids are signing up like now for their classes, do you, do we get in advance of this is what they're signing up for and this is what the additional fees would be? So, you know, here's the proposed list of classes that your child wants to take, and here's the above and beyond.
I, doesn't our course, does our course catalog identify any of those, Jane?
No, not in our course catalog. It does not. It will say if there will be a fee attached, but it does not say what the fee is.
Doesn't, okay. Okay.
So when you make the, go ahead.
No, I, I'm just like wondering, so like in the case, I mean, I know the multivariable's a little different because of the college credit, but sort of, I don't know, I'm kind of mixing a couple thoughts in my head right now. So is it possible to give the fam, so around this time of year, this is what the child wants to take, here's what the additional fees are going to be, you know, like, once we approve everything?
Yeah, we can look at that process, yeah.
Because then I'm thinking, too, if there's families that are on the bubble that don't qualify for free and reduced, but these extra fees might be a burden.
Right.
So could they like contact you on an individual base? You know, I'm trying to look for a middle ground.
That was a priority a few years ago. One of the things we do not want kids to be selecting courses only based off of whether it's going to have a fee or not. And so our schools and our counselors work with the kids on an individual family need basis to ensure that they, they can enroll. There are a number of mechanisms in place to ensure that they can take the course.
Like I said, that's good to know. I just want to make sure there's a middle ground that nobody's excluded, or, you know, they, that communication piece is still ongoing to not prohibit them.
How were you able to determine that? When you did your review and you said, you reviewed it and you saw that that wasn't, okay, because like, that's what they, it, it sounds like that's what you were studying. Is that correct? Whether or not the, the selection was being made because of the cost? Okay.
We did do a survey to parents in also at all the home and school meetings and gathered input and provided that to, to the district. That was when I was seated as principal. It's how we did that.
Okay. Donna.
So I have two comments, kind of on the same wavelength here. So I, I'm just looking at business technology. For instance, software engineering has a $60 per semester fee, and it's because they build the Raspberry Pi piece. And I can speak from experience as a parent who has a student in that classroom, that, that's a big piece of what they love doing in there. And to me, I would foresee if we started to change fees or to, two things happening. One, this department saying, well, we're just not going to do that because that's way too expensive. That would be a concern of mine, because it's, it's a piece that I could see being cut. And two, some of these then giving a supply list and having me have to go out and find this Raspberry Pi, or the three novels, or whatever else is involved. So those are my two concerns about looking at, I, I agree, I want to find ways to give money back to the taxpayer. That's always been what I've wanted to do, and I just don't feel like this is an effective way to do it, because I feel like it's going to either get deleted, or, I mean, eliminated, or it's going to get passed to me in a different way, which is going to be much more difficult. So those are my concerns.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask, would the board, does the board feel similarly to they felt on the last question with regard to their priorities in this regard? Or do you wish to consider this as an alternative to the general fees?
Is there, is there an estimate similar to the last line item, like that 3.2 million? Is there an estimate on this one? Like, how much this?
Well, I, I will tell you, I would be less inclined to support a recommendation for these fees than I would the general fees, because these truly are user fees for consumable materials being passed directly on to the user, his or herself, as opposed to the overall general fees. So only, only those students who are accessing these courses are paying these fees at essentially the cost. So it would be my recommendation that, I, I would be less inclined to provide any recommendation on, on waiving these fees, because these are cost fees, actual cost fees.
I would say that the total amount we spend on a student consists of actual cost fees, and we cover a great deal of them for all of our students. And if we can afford to pay these, you know, for 17% of the students out of pocket who need them, I see no problem with paying for a variety of other students, some 80% who might benefit from this fee waiver.
I think the philosophical idea behind the fees for, for students is just that in addition to the regular taxpayers, the students are receiving the benefit of the schools, and that's where we've ended up with these fees, is that, you know, besides your regular taxpayers, some of whom have students in the schools and some who don't, our students are, our, our families are actually receiving the benefit of the schools. And we, we try not to make them hard. I mean, they're, I think it was $50 for the tech fee, for example. I'm not sure, I can't remember off the other page, but it's kind of a philosophical question for us as a board if we want to continue with that as a, I mean, we, we do this in every area. We pay, we have students who go to summer school, pay for summer school. We have students who, you know, have parking, pay for parking, et cetera. I think we would be alike from every school district. As far as I understand from previous discussion with 204, I think they raised their fees to come up with revenue, at least at one point when they were trying to address their budget. They were looking at things like the towel fee and things like that. So I guess that's where the board needs to let the, let the district know if that's kind of the direction that they want to look at in terms of this or the other. I would tend to agree with Dan in terms of the specificity of these, that these are individual courses and only for high school students. So we're not really even looking at a parity or equity for the rest of the school district. So if we were going to look at one thing, I think that would be the more appropriate as opposed to this.
I, I would say if you're talking about 204, I would suggest that they are not running a surplus.
Yeah, they definitely looked at their fees to be able to cover their costs, because they didn't have the, at least this was some time ago, and they raised their fees.
So for example, on the driver's ed fee of some $400, I would say that most students take driver's ed.
Not in district.
Not in our district, no.
And, and most students as well, they pay for that. Like, if they do, most parents, if they aren't doing it in school because they don't want to use the credit, they would pay that $500 or $450 or whatever it is for Excel and pay that. So that would just be a similar kind of fee to what they would pay outside.
So I'm hearing that less than 50% of high school students take driver's ed in the district?
Yeah, considerably.
Thank you.
Quick, quick question.
Yes, Charles.
So, so Dan, you mentioned that, just so I understand this a little bit deeper, so these are reflective of the actual costs of, so if, is there a, is there any sort of subsidy building? So is this is like the direct cost, like the materials? I'll just pick an example, veterinary science, $10 a semester. So literally, the materials cost $10. It's not like the materials cost 20, and we're asking for 10. It's, it's a direct cost to cost?
In, in some cases, that, that may actually be true, is that the cost being charged is less than what's actually, right?
Right, okay, all right. Because, because I was also, and Donnie made this point on the other, on the other piece, which is if you have to go to store to buy these materials yourselves, you're not going to benefit from the level of discount we get. So if someone wants to learn and wants to get the materials, they're not going to be able to get, I'm presuming they won't be able to get them at the same kind of a negotiated rate that we would be able to get them, especially for some of the more higher-end items for some of the classes like, you know, photography and where you have printing cartridges and things like that, so.
I mean, to some degree, this is akin to the school supplies fee that we have in the elementary level, because we have the school supply, if you buy from the school, you get the school supply, or you can go buy it and you get your list. We don't get that in high school for paper and pencils and all those other things. You know, they bring whatever they bring for their papers, but then this is their school supply list.
I, so I mean, it, it sounds like probably we're not totally interested in this, but I, I would say the, the main reason why it kind of strikes a tone for me more is because when I, when I look at some of these classes, it's like math classes, it's history classes, science classes. It's not like, you know, they're, they're not necessarily, you know, optional classes. And, and so when I think about like how we, we don't spend money like completely equally between students, right? And so in that sense, like, we're, and so for me, that's why it's not quite the same as, you know, saying that we, we don't want to look at this compared with, you know, the other, the other sheet, like, looking at like youth in government or, or, you know, math club, or, you know, things like that? So these just seem so like, so basic.
Right, I think the other proposal, as I understood, was looking at the general fees, not the optional fees. So the other one had the general and optional, and this has just high school course. So when we were having that discussion, I think Paul had suggested that he was looking at the general fees.
There are optional fees here as well, and I'm not looking at those.
Right. He was looking at general fees on that other page.
Well, maybe, maybe this is like something to look at longer term, but especially when it comes to some of these core, core classes, math, science, you know?
Again, I think probably the more information we can understand about how other school districts address these questions probably helps.
If you look longer term, we may not have the surplus.
Yeah.
We do have the surplus now, and that's why I'm suggesting we do something now.
Okay. So I think that we probably have, I'm just, I, no one has spoken up beyond Janet, so I'm just guessing we have a similar feeling of that this would be something that would not be our top priority at this moment, perhaps in the future. But at this point, we want to look at, you know, if there were going to be additional savings to the taxpayer, either abatements or, you know, or else additional spending, et cetera. And this would be a lower priority item for this particular year. Is that correct according to the board? Yes. Got it. Okay. But we would be interested in benchmark information because that helps us to always understand what other schools are doing. Okay, great. Okay, so if you have additional questions, please send them on to Dan. Otherwise, we'll look for action on high school course fees next board meeting. Okay, item 8.03, Career 203 update.
I'd like to invite Director of Career 203, Brian Valk, to come to the presentation table. And first, let's welcome Brian into his new position, formerly the principal at Kennedy Junior High School. Annually, the administration, in partnership with the Naperville Unit Education Association, represented tonight by President Dan Iverson, reviews the Career 203 program and considers recommendations to improve the overall program. And this evening, Brian will bring those recommendations from the committee to the Board of Education for your consideration and action at the next meeting. Brian?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss Career 203 this evening. In tonight's presentation, whoops, I'm sorry about this. In tonight's presentation, I plan to review the cornerstones of the Career 203 program, provide an update of the performance of Career 203, and present the Career 203 Assessment Committee's recommended changes to the 2020-2021 Career 203 Professional Growth Guide. As you may, as you may recall, Career 203 is Naperville District's professional growth model created to reward educators for participating in relevant and rigorous educational opportunities that fulfill the evolving needs of the district students. Through negotiations in 2010, it replaced a graduate credit system that both the association and administration recognized was not meeting the needs of the district. To ensure our staff was up to date on accessing Career 203, human resources staff visited all school buildings this past fall and conducted meetings to review expectations and procedures related to the program. District 203 certified staff are designated as either an emerging educator, staff yet to earn their first master's degree, or career educator, those with at least one master's degree. Career educators fully participate in Career 203 as they engage in brickwork in order to earn compensation for targeted learning experiences that positively impact student learning. Presently, approximately 84% of our district faculty is considered a career educator. The image on the screen was designed to represent the numerous ways district staff could be recognized for continuing the professional education, participating in peer-designed courses, completing a university program, providing teacher leadership, or engaging in action research. This graph represents the trend of bricks earned by district staff over the past five years. Bricks are subject to the review of the Career 203 Director for Approval. Each brick on the Career 203 model is compensated by points or one-time payments. Points advance educators on the salary schedule and are earned by completing bricks that result in a fundamental change of an educator's practice that leads to increases in student learning. Educators earn a one-time payment by completing a brick for which current knowledge and skills are extended and refined. In our most recent year, there was an increase in the proportion of points earned in Career 203 through district-provided courses, but submissions from universities and outside institutions still compromise the greatest component of staff professional learning. During our present school year, 16 different courses have been offered to staff in face-to-face, blended, or online formats, serving 200 certified staff members. Courses were proposed and designed by district staff in four categories: student engagement, diversity and inclusion, technology, and core academics. Proposed courses were approved by a committee from our Learning Services Department. Course instructors did participate in district-provided training on adult learning theory and learning management system usage such as Canvas before facilitating their own courses. Next, I'd like to bring you up on our Career 203 Assessment Committee. On January 14th, a committee comprised of NUA members and district administrators met to discuss five proposed amendments to the Career 203 Program Guide. The committee's recommendations are as follows as they each pass through the committee by unanimous vote. The first two proposals I'll be sharing with you, actually, are just cleaning up pre-existing language in the program guide. The first proposal is to calibrate the fall salary advancement date between the Career 203 Program Guide and NUA contract. In one location, our contract, we have October 1st being a fall advancement date, and the program guide, it stated as October 31st. It is necessary that we continue to follow what's bargained in the contract and also necessary for a timely evaluation of salary advancement requests. So our proposal was just to edit the program guide to read, "Brick credit process requires the filing to be submitted by October 1st for fall lane advancement." The next change is also revision of language. We wanted to revise language to clarify staff ability to create and facilitate multiple professional learning courses. In this first six months in this role, as I traveled throughout the district, meeting staff, there were some instances, I think I encountered was maybe some misunderstanding about some opportunities through Career 203. And one of those was determining whether or not staff could teach more than one original course. Absolutely, we would value those contributions by our staff. We have staff who are talented and trained in a variety of different areas. So we thought just to clean up the language inside the Career 203 Program Guide might help clarify that and encourage participation again. So just editing on page 80, that compensation for educators successfully completing these bricks for each original course is as follows. The next two proposals are actually going to codify present practices. They were not stated in our program guide, but they kind of follow along, which we have historically done to award credit in these two areas. But for the sake of transparency and clarity, we felt it important to add these two to our program guide. Our third proposal is to include language to identify the conversion of continuing education units, CEUs, to Career 203 points. Many of our specialist positions such as school nurses, occupational therapists, physical therapists, roles like that must complete continuing professional development for their licensure. These professional development opportunities are not typically provided through colleges and universities which offer graduate credit. So we kind of needed a way to just be clear about how we will compensate for their time spent earning those CEUs. And by doing so, we use a recommendation from the United States Department of Education, which states, "CEUs are mostly commonly converted via a formula that considers at least 10 CEUs to equal a single academic credit hour." As you recall, with Career 203, everything is kind of calculated on this concept of a single academic credit hour. So for example, a three-hour course may be taken at North Central College is worth the equivalent of 30 Career 203 points. That's our unit that we kind of use to reference there. Our proposed CU conversion language was essentially to allow this with this calculation. The three bullets there in the middle of the proposal ensure that those who are applying for credit based on their CEUs are meeting our standards. So the person applying for a CU credit holds a role which the professional development is relevant and applicable, meaning that a school nurse would take school nursing programs and occupational therapy programs, things like that. Professional development generating the CEUs is relevant to the student needs of District 203 and represents new learning for the staff member, and the professional development is provided by a credible source. And these criteria are all subject to my discretion and my assessment as the Career 203 Director. Our fourth proposal is kind of in a similar vein. We wanted to include language to identify the conversion of contact hours to Career 203 points. If you go back to our Career 203 cornerstones, one of those is that our district staff has the freedom to elect professional learning, which is relevant to their student needs and also provides their own professional development. In some instances, our staff are finding actually very applicable, very relevant professional development, but it may not be gauged in academic credit hours. So we need once again a consistent formula for generating how that might come about. In this instance here, I refer to the State Board of Education, which recommends that 15 clock hours of professional development equals one semester hour. And as always, the school code affirms that coursework and professional development must directly relate to the educator's license or endorsement areas and must address state-approved standards. So what we would then be doing is applying a, an equation here of 15 contact hours would be the equivalent of 10 Career 203 points. Once again, with three similar criteria, that the person applying for contact hour credit holds a role which the professional development is relevant and applicable. The professional development contact hours encompass learning that is relevant to the student needs of District 203, and the professional development is provided by a credible source. And as Career 203 Director, I would be the one assessing those criteria. The final proposal was to allow educators who have maximized their salary potential to choose payment instead of points for District 203 course completion. Our present rules right now, educators who have reached that far lane, who are at masters plus 54, have the opportunity, the potential to earn points and be rewarded, a one-time payment of $1,500 upon earning 120 additional points past that place where they are right now. This payment coincides with our regular salary advancement windows, and they're allowed to advance one payment per year. In conversation with some of our school administrators and school staff, we recognize that there are certain situations where maybe someone has moved all the way over in their salary advancement, maybe nearing retirement, and may benefit from an additional incentive to pick up an additional District 203 course that might provide them some learning to help support students in the final several years of their career here. We came up with this proposed payment language. Essentially, certified staff whose salary lane placement is at masters plus 54 may elect to receive a cash payment instead of Career 203 points for participation in our district coursework. Staff who are eligible for this option would be compensated at a rate of $20 per point for course enrollment and completion. These same staff will be restricted to being compensated for up to 20 points per fiscal year, which the course is completed. So maximum earning of $400 per year. Staff whose salary lane is at the same placement may also elect to receive payments instead of points for the creation facilitation of an original District 203 professional learning course. The rate is higher at $25 per point relative to the points identified for the creation of a six or 12-hour course. These same staff are limited compensation at this rate for one original course per year, excuse me, per year. And then all other expectations for our brick reflection submission apply, so following all the other rules of our Career 203 program. Those were the five recommendations that came out of committee. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Welcome back to the board. We're excited to see you in this new role, and thank you for your presentation. Questions from the board? Donna?
Thank you for your report. Something that, as I looked at it ahead of time, didn't come to me because it was verbalized through you, but, so, did you, you said you, did you travel through all the schools in the district and?
Yes.
Talk to us a little bit more about that.
Sure. Just kind of coming into things in, in July and having contact with a lot of staff, there was a lot of recurring questions that were taking place. And I think it's probably reflective, our program rolled out in 2012, and at that time, staff were at a certain age and ready for the program, and as they've maybe advanced in their career, there's now a new set of staff who is ready for that information. So myself and also Shelley Nelson for Human Resources, we made presentations at all of our schools. At least one time, we hit the high schools a couple times, but also including Anne Reed and then also Connections as well. So we made certain that we were available to kind of, we had a stock presentation we go through. In addition to that, we probably spend a significant amount of time each week, either, I travel to schools to maybe set up individual appointments. Shelley hosts people here at the district office, so we're trying to be as clear as possible. We want to make certain that the mechanics of running the program don't interfere with staff's opportunity to find professional development.
So I love that. Thank you so much for doing that. And then I will say honestly, over the years, some of the concerns that I have heard, you've addressed in every one of these proposals. So I'm really excited to see the CEUs and the contact hours and all the things that you've put together are literally the things that I've heard concerns about over the years. And so I love that we're addressing concerns of the staff to make it more user-friendly and, and still have lots of accountability. I love, it's, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to, want to just, oh, Joe, sorry.
On the previous slide, where you talk about the creation of a new course, so the six-hour course, is that 30 points are given for the creation of the six-hour course and 40 for the 12-hour course? Can you talk about how those numbers were determined and, you know, why the relative small difference between those two?
Actually, I can't give you a full definition because those were created before I took the role, but it does look at the amount of work that goes into creating the length of the course. So all of our staff who are going to be serving as the facilitator and educator of other adults in our district do go through training as far as adult learning theory and also using Canvas or other technology. But then I think it kind of was scaling it a little bit, looking at the amount of time they might need to spend for a six-hour course versus 12-hour course. So those were rates, I believe, that were established probably at the inception of the program back in 2012, and we've kind of carried those forward.
So there's some professional development on the front end?
Absolutely, absolutely. In fact, we did, this year when we offered new courses, we did provide new training. So even staff who had been through this before received new training as well from some members of our Learning Services Department.
Thank you.
I'm also very excited, first of all, it's great that you did the review. I think it's wonderful that we're able to hear the feedback from staff and that you're able to clarify some of the expectations and confusion. For example, I really am thrilled that you were able to look at proposal two and make sure that staff who want to create more than one original course, because I think some of those courses that I've seen that we've offered in terms of the diversity and inclusion, they're fantastic and they're great offerings, and it's really great to see our staff express their extra knowledge and, and that creativity. So thank you for clarifying that. I'm thrilled and hopefully we'll get more staff. Do you expect to have more staff create because of this?
We do. And actually, Jane and I were meeting this morning, we talked about what are some ways perhaps that we can do some more recruitment, because I do feel like there's a diversity of talent that's not been tapped yet, but certainly that we can tap into in the future.
I think it's fantastic, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, we'll have action at our next board meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on to policy. We have several policies that we're going to be looking at this evening. We'll start with item 8.04, First Reading Policy 4.20, Fund Balances.
We're actually going to take item 8.04 and 8.05 together at the same time. We'll keep them listed separately pending anticipated action by the Board at a future meeting. But our Chief Financial Officer, Chief School Business Official, Mike Francis, has been reviewing our policies related to investments and our fund balance and has some recommendations for the board. So I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. Presented this evening is a recommendation for changes to two operational policies, 4.20 Fund Balance and 4.40 Incurring Debt. Tonight is the first look and review of those changes. In recommending, recommending the proposed changes, we looked, we took a holistic look at the language in both policies and aligned it with best practices from other highly-rated school districts in the Chicagoland area. Our current fund balance policy is the standard, basic policy from the Illinois Association of School Boards. We looked at policies at our comparable unit districts as well as other AAA-rated school districts in Illinois and incorporated best practice language that strengthens the policy as well as gives guidance and direction if we are not in compliance. We currently have informal fund balance guidance with six to nine months of reserves against annual expenses, as well as the formal language in Section 7 of Policy 4.40, which we are to maintain a minimum of 10% reserve without early taxes. We are recommending removal of this language as the new fund balance policy language is more properly placed. The new fund, the new fund balance language maintains the spirit of 4.40 in our informal policy while narrowing the range and providing consistency of measurement by not including early taxes received at the end of the fiscal year to be used in the following fiscal year. With the language of the proposed policy, we would stand at 31% operating fund balance compared to expenses for the year that ended June 30th, 2019. Since this percentage exceeds the recommended range in the policy, we will need to develop and recommend a plan for use of the funds to the board before the end of the fiscal year. Both policies have been reviewed by our investment as well as our financial advisors. We are asking for action at this, at our next school board meeting on February 18th. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you for that review. Questions from the board? Janet?
So just to clarify, you said we are right now at 30% under the, kind of the new accounting proposal? Historically, have we, has that number been pretty stable? Like have we ever gotten to the 5% to 15% range?
That number has increased at least the last eight years in a row. We've been, again, the old way we used to look at this is a six to nine month range. I would say eight to 10 years ago, we were closer to six months. This year, we just exceeded nine months. We've always kind of been within that range, but that is a pretty big range. This new policy narrows that
This new policy narrows that range, but then also excludes early taxes like we do with, like we do in Policy 440.
Thanks.
I have a question with regard to the fund balance exceeding the range. So you said that currently we're at 30 and so it's 5% to 15. So we would be in this situation immediately, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do your benchmark policies that you looked at, do they have similar paragraphs with regard to the paragraph that we have where it says if the fund balance exceeds the range, the administration shall recommend a plan to use the funds that's aligned to the board's strategic priorities?
Yeah, I mean, no fund balance policy, when you go beyond the standard ISB policy, districts actually have very kind of unique fund balance policies. Some of them don't, and I looked at the really highly rated school districts, all of them addressed what happens when you fall below a number. Not all of them addressed what you do when you go above a number, but a number of them did. And when they did address that, they typically recommended things like, I put in the context of kind of one-time non-recurring type expenses.
See that.
That don't continue or put you into a structural deficit situation.
And so was that similar with the benchmark policies that they would have that in the one to use?
Yes, it is. Yes. And so that would be the plan that we would need to present to the board again in the next few months, because we would be out of compliance under the new policy. We would have to come up with a plan to utilize those funds in the fund balance beyond the range.
And that plan could be over time. It doesn't have to be immediate all at once.
That's exactly right.
And can you translate it, since we're doing so many different translations, in terms of the months, to go down to 15 is how many months?
15% is about two months. Now recall, that's not cash on hand.
Right.
There's a couple of different metrics from the State Board of Education. We still have the early taxes. We're just not looking at fund balance with those early taxes because they're to be used the following year. So they, in this, we can do this without even deferring it in our audit. The recommendation will be to defer it so everything's in line with our annual financial report. But this policy is written in such a way that we could do that calculation, kind of like we do now in 440, where we remove it, even though they're not removed in our audit. We can do either way, but I, you know, it's, to me, it's best to line up all of our practices in once. If we're not looking at early taxes, which are the taxes that are collected basically in June that really inflate the fund balance that last month of the fiscal year, but they're levied for and are for the following fiscal year? So if they were one month late, our fund balance would be tremendously different, and you've seen that. It was over $120 million difference because that's how much money we receive in that month of June.
Donna.
So the part that we're taking out on 440 talks about cash and cash equivalent and what it includes. And it only includes the investments maturing within 90 days. Is that, so I guess this piece is taken out, so I want to understand what you're referring to then?
What I'm referring to on Section 7 of 440 and the reduction?
Well, when we're talking about the 5% to 15%, does that not include long-term investments then?
No, it would be all fund balance. Investments, whether they're liquid, they're in the money market, they're three months, whether two or three years.
Okay.
We have a cash flow and an investment strategy. This language in Section 7 of 440 hinders our investment policy or our ability to make investments when we receive those taxes in June. So when we receive those taxes in June, without those, we're saying we need a minimum of 10%. What I'm changing this to is a minimum of 10% fund balance in our operating funds, regardless of how that money is being invested.
Okay. So.
I mean, that is a different strategy. We're going to take cash and try to earn as much investment income on it as we can. If we don't, now DuPage has never been late in distributing property taxes. But if they are late one month, we will still have enough liquidity to make it through that month.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Charles?
Well, I just, for clarification, just something you said, as I'm processing this kind of real time and trying to keep track of where you're going. So what you're saying is that the provisions that you're outlining in 420, right, in terms of the 5% to 15%, if we do that, it makes the need for 7 unnecessary?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's very similar. That 10%, if you look at that 10%, it's really calculated the same way. It would fall right in the middle of that range that we're recommending. Those would be apples-to-apples comparison. The few sentences that Ms. Wonke referenced would be gone, but to me, that is not, it's not an incurring debt type of a situation. It's a fiscal position that the district is in and the ability of how we invest those dollars. We will still have those dollars. It will be cash on hand and we will be liquid, but it will free up a little bit and we'll be able to earn a little bit more investment income by investing those dollars out beyond the 90-day period, which is what this policy is restricting us right now.
Any additional questions?
Okay. So if you have additional questions, if they come to you, please send them to Dan and then we will consider both items 8.04 and 8.05 at our next board meeting. Okay, so we will move on to item 8.06, MOU/IGA with Naperville Police Department.
Yeah, and items 8.06, 8.07, 8.08 are also interrelated, but we'll take them independently. We'll take them agenda item by agenda item. And so Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education Nancy Voice will present our recommendations to the board. We have been working on this for a period of time with the City of Naperville Police Department as well as legal counsel to ensure that we comply with new law. And so I'll turn it over to Nancy to walk us through.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the Intergovernment Agreement. The city and the school district believe it's in the best interest of both parties to enter into this agreement for the safety of our community. The services which are provided under this agreement help to prevent crime and maintain the safety and order on school property. The school resource program is designed to provide law enforcement services and related education to our students, staff, and families. This agreement is intended to operationalize the existing working agreement between the two agencies and is based upon national best practices, including the United States Department of Justice's Safe School-Based Enforcement through collaboration, understanding, and respect recommendations. Attorneys from the City of Naperville and Naperville School District 203 have collaborated on this agreement, and what's presented to you in this document is a review reflective of that collaboration, and it is in compliance with all laws. Do you want to do questions on that one before we move on to the MOU?
So then, thank you for presenting with regard to the IGA. Questions on the IGA? I don't see any, so let's go forward with the MOU.
Sure. This MOU between the City of Naperville and the Board of Education is intended to promote a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment for all students, staff, and other members of our school community. The SRO program provides district administrators with law enforcement resources and expertise to assist with and maintain safety, security, and order in the school environment, and it also bridges a gap to related community services. In the past, we did not have an MOU with the city in regards to the SRO program. However, we worked closely and collaboratively to ensure laws were being followed and services were being provided that were in the best interests of our school communities. This MOU will now operationalize and clarify the responsibilities of the city and the district, their roles and responsibilities of the SRO and district administrators, and the scope of their authority in the administration of the SRO program. Again, the attorneys from the City of Naperville and the school district have collaborated on this agreement in order to present what's before you today.
Thank you. Questions from the board on the memorandum of understanding? Janet.
Just a quick clarification, will we have a similar one with Lyle?
Yes, that's in the works now with their legal counsel also.
Donna. So I have significantly more questions now that I have some other things to think about, so I will submit those. But I guess I'd like to understand, did the staff get one of these too?
I think on behalf of the board, it would be helpful for the board to understand the comments that were given to us by the speaker that we have here and the administration's perspective.
Yes, that's what I was asking for.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So all of those, that would be helpful.
Okay, any additional questions beyond response to that? Okay. And if you have, I know some questions were already sent, so if you have additional questions, go ahead and send them on to Dan and we'll get that back. Okay? All right. So then we'll go on to the, unless there's any further questions, we will go on to the item 8.07 and Naperville Police Department Reciprocal Agreement.
The reciprocal agreement between District 203 and the City of Naperville is there for your review. The ability to maintain open communication between the police department and the school district is a crucial element of maintaining safety in our schools. State law, as reflected in the Juvenile Court Act, requires a reciprocal reporting agreement between the school district and law enforcement regarding criminal offenses. The attorneys collaborated on this agreement, and what's presented to you is reflective of that collaboration and changes in the law.
Any questions on that?
Are there any questions on the reciprocal reporting agreement? Okay. If a question comes to your mind, please go ahead and send it.
That's very much what we've been doing, so I haven't seen any changes in that one.
Great. Okay, perfect. Okay, so we'll go on to item 8.08, First Reading Policy 7.150, Police Interviews.
The attached for your policy, 7150, Agency and Police Interviewing. The policy is intended to replace our current policy, 7150, Police Interrogation. Legal counsel has reviewed this document to ensure it's reflective of changes in law as well as press recommendations, and as a result, it is much more detailed than our current policy. We're asking for recommending this policy to be accepted and approved at the February 18 Board of Education meeting.
Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Questions from the board? Know that we already, this is already in there, but this is in compliance with the current law, and I know that significant changes were made to practice according to current law, correct?
Yes, and those started at the start of the new year, even though the law went into effect January 1, we implemented in August, and training was taken in place over the summer.
So basically, this is catching up, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
This is current practice now according to the law. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Oh, Paul, sorry.
My question is not about 8.08. I'd like to make one more comment about 8.01 and 8.02. Regarding benchmark districts, if they were to jump off a cliff, I'd not be interested in jumping off that cliff. So I'd like for us to consider that in isolation, what we want to do. For board members who are prioritizing debt levy or general levy, I encourage you to do so. I don't believe these are mutually exclusive. And if you consider the general levy, I'd like to remind you that general levy changes are, I'm not going to say permanent, but difficult to change and hard to recapture without referendum. Whereas these fees, the administration and the board has fairly strong control over them. We can turn them up, we can turn them down, year to year if we so choose, giving us a lot more flexibility than, again, prioritizing the general or debt levies. But thank you for listening. One last comment. I've received calls and emails about this topic, mostly from new residents who came here and said, "This is news to me." Would it influence your judgment on this if you were to receive calls, emails, or public comment on this topic in numbers?
I think that that's one of the things that will be helpful about getting the benchmark data, is we'll be able to understand what individuals in other districts who would move into our district would be coming from, the situation that they would be coming from.
Didn't answer my questions about calls, emails, and public comment at this desk.
Donna.
So I have a comment about the prior part of your proposal. As I'm sitting here and starting to process things for a while, so I think that when we're looking at abatement, and I know they're not necessarily dependent on each other, but when we look at abatements or a reduction in the levy, that affects fairly, I think, every taxpayer in the community, not just those in our schools. And so, and for me, I think that the tax relief for those with students not in schools is something that I'm, is more of a priority. I mean, it gets everybody, but particularly, it doesn't eliminate those who don't have students in schools. So that's why those are my priorities, so, yeah.
Acknowledged.
Okay. All right. Then we will go on.
I still didn't hear the answer from my other board members. If you were to receive input by phone call, email, or a public comment, would that have any effect on you? Because I have.
Probably all of us, okay, go ahead.
I would say that we all listen to the community and take the feedback from our community. And the community feedback that I've heard is from those who don't, particularly are from those who don't have students in the school and the tax, the burden that the taxes are on them. That's why I'm looking to how we can fairly adjust that for everyone across the district and not just those who are in our schools.
And I think in terms of looking at, like, continuing to, of course, we have to factor all of those things in as well. And when we look at additional revenue that we would lose if we were to, say, for example, do a $3 million fee waiver, we also have to look at, you know, what other kinds of things, you know, if we were to fund that, we wouldn't fund, you know? So looking that might benefit all students, that might benefit, you know, whether it's a capital project or whether it's something that's an educational program or an additional staff member. So those are the other things we have to factor in. Charles?
So for me, just to answer the question you asked directly, and to say it the way Donna said it, yes, as I hear from people, it does have an impact. So, you know, but I think we all hear from people on different topics and different things. So yes, your answer to your question for me is yes, it would have, it would and does have an impact. The other thing I would just say that I'm concerned about, and it was one of the things that was outlined, we talked about in the other policies and the recommendation in terms of what to do with funding. I would be concerned to pull all fees and then the next year, put them all back.
Yeah.
Because now you have something that suddenly people aren't used to paying fees, and people get used to not having to pay something really quickly. And so suddenly, we'd be grabbing the $3 million back when the, well, what happened last year? You didn't grab the, what's going on? Why suddenly am I paying? And the history, people would forget that, wait, you always used to pay before, but I didn't pay last year, so now why am I paying this year? And it just, it creates a different, so I understand the short-term concern. I think that we have to look at it from a longitudinal standpoint in terms of, is this something that we're going to give and then take away and then give and then take away and put ourselves in a situation? So that's just what I'm weighing in my head, so.
I think you've raised some good points about ways to work within the, if there is, you know, when we're looking at something like, for example, this plan that he's talking about with regard to the 15% and then going to the 30%, the idea of looking at ways that we can decrease the taxpayer burden as a part of that is very important. I think that's very important to the whole board. So that's definitely, definitely the point that you raised. Okay. If there are no further comments on 8.08, we will go on to item 9, which is Discussion with Action. We have no more Discussion with Action this evening. We will move on to item 10. We have no old business for this evening. Item 11, New Business. We have no new business. So we will move to item 12, Upcoming Events. Item 12.01, Schedule of Events.
I would just note that due to the President's Day holiday, our next Board of Education meeting actually occurs on a Tuesday, Tuesday, February 18. And I'd like to call the community's attention to Thursday, March 19, 2020, Naperville Education Foundation hosts its Building a Passion Breakfast, always a great event, and the foundation is such a huge supporter of District 203 and our kids that I would encourage people to attend.
If we do not have any additional events we want to highlight, we will go to item 13, Adjournment, and I will entertain a motion for item 1301, a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second are heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.